Okay. Okay. And I would like to call to order this meeting of the Park Recreation Commission. Would everyone please stand and use your microphones for the pledge of allegiance? Okay. Giovanna, would you do the roll call, please?
I would be happy to, Chair Massey. Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Home? Commissioner Walnick?
Here.
Vice Chair Held?
Here.
Chair Massey?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on to the next item, there's some explanation about the Zoom meeting process that I need to get into the record. Due to the physical distancing protocols in place at this time, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the top and bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. Join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. Or phone-in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968 with the conference ID and pass code 124522. Press star nine to raise your hand to be called on and star six to unmute. These options for public comment will be available until we have completed public comment. Okay. With that, my, I guess. We'll move to the consent calendar. On the consent calendar tonight is approval of special and regular meeting minutes for November 3rd. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the November minutes unless someone has changes to propose.
I move we approve.
A second.
Okay, Giovanna, could you do a roll call vote, please?
I would be happy to, Chair Massey, and just one minor change that we will have to make is the numbering of the regular minutes.
You are so. Left it out, thank you.
No worries. So with that, we'll start the roll call vote. Commissioner Home?
Aye.
Commissioner Held?
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Walnick?
Aye.
Chair Massey?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is passed.
Okay. Um. At this time, we offer to members of the public the opportunity to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda.
Sorry, Chris, sorry, let me interrupt. Do we need to approve the special meeting minutes as well?
Special meet, I am told that the, what we've just done is to approve both the meeting minutes in one motion, and I'm told that that is the appropriate procedure.
Perfect.
Okay, well, would the public comment, members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda may address the commission at this time. The item on tonight's agenda is parks, open spaces, and facilitating, facility rather, naming policy first draft. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter not on your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to provide public comment on items not on the agenda at this time?
Chair Massey, we do have one attendee, but they do not have their hand raised.
Okay, well, then I will close the public comment at this point, and we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is parks, open spaces, and facility naming policy first draft. Now, I understand that staff other than providing us with a cop, an on-screen copy of the proposed draft for help us with our discussion does not otherwise have a presentation tonight, so I'd like to move at this point directly to commission questions about the, about this proposal. I'd like to keep it to questions only at this point. And then after the public hearing, we'll come back and, and have the opportunity for commission comments and discussion about the various portions of the draft. So do we have any questions at this point? I'll just throw it open. Any questions, anybody?
I have one, and again, I apologize for missing last time around when this was discussed, but I'm just out of curiosity, we say that our preference is that in considering naming that the person should be deceased. Is there a reason why we kind of landed on that?
So, thank you, Chair Massey and members of the commission. This was my, our first attempt to try and at least take the input that we heard last month and try to put it into a first draft. The reason that we compromised on that is that there was not commission consensus on whether the person should either be deceased before, before a facility is named after them. So when looking through some other city policies, this seemed like the closest landing point, which is it's, it's preferred, but it's not required.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Hearing none. Then I think we should move on to the, the public hearing on this, and we'll, we'll open this up now to any, any comments from the public on tonight's agenda item. Do we have any any requests for public comment?
We do not at this time, Chair Massey.
Okay, well, then I will. I'll close the public hearing on this then and bring it back to the commission. And in discussion with Sheila, we've we thought that the best way to, to approach this is to take this section by section and just open it up to comments by, or, or discussion items by the commissioners on each section separately, rather than trying to have each of us comment on the entire document in one shot, so. If we could start with section one. Commissioner Held, why don't you start on that if you can?
Yep, let me just pull up, track it to my notes.
So I'm sorry, before I just start, I just, I had indicated to Chair Massey that I can pull the document up on a shared screen. If you think that would be helpful for everybody to follow along all at the same time. So I can do it either way. If you want to comment simply on your notes, that's fine. If you think it's helpful to have it up on the screen, I'm happy to do that as well.
How does everybody feel? I thought perhaps it would be helpful to have it up on the screen, but it's certainly not a requirement.
I mean, the one disadvantage is that you all can't see each other when you have the the shared document up on the screen.
Well, let me, let me reverse that then unless somebody sees a reason to put it up on the screen, let's not.
I, I actually think we should put it on the screen, considering this is recorded and posted as a public document. Having it on the screen, if anyone's watching, I mean, not that we have an abundance of people watching, but if they are, that will be helpful in the future.
Okay, that's fine. Any other thoughts on this? Then let's, then let's put it up. We just have to not see our smiling faces for a little bit.
Okay, so I think everybody can see it on the screen. Just one other comment, I think I indicated this in the staff report. This has not been reviewed by our attorney's office, city attorney's office, and so I'm really trying to just get from all of you whether we're headed in the right direction. I don't want to consider this a final document. There's, I, I know that there's some missing pieces already, particularly maybe around definitions and things like that. This may not be the final formatting of it as well, so I just wanted to try and see whether or not the concepts are trying to be, you know, responsive to what we heard last month.
Okay. So section one.
Great, so I, no comments from me on this. I think this makes absolute sense.
Okay. Commissioner Home?
No comment.
Commissioner Fields?
Yeah, I think this is the right introduction and first section. I have no, no comments or changes.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Walnick?
Same, no comments on this section.
And I, I don't have any either. I think this is is, is well drafted and appropriate, lays out the, the process pretty clearly. Definitions. I'd be, I'd be particularly interested in people's thoughts on additional definitions that should be in here as well as, of course, comments on, on the two terms that are defined. So let's take this the other way around. Commissioner Walnick?
Um, so I, I've dealt with definitions a lot as an attorney, and I am strongly opposed to having them unless you absolutely need them. I think it really just complicates the whole document. So I, my preference would be to only pull definitions that are, you know, for things that are really complicated and can't be explained within the text of the document itself. With that being said, I don't think there's really any missing here. I think everything else can be defined as it, as it is in the section that it appears.
Okay, all right. So are you, are you saying then that the, the two definitions that are here should be, should be stricken?
No, I think these are good. I think these are necessary for the document itself. I just, I would caution against, you know, I've seen documents where the definition list is longer than the actual document itself, so I think I'm just cautioning to be careful. More definitions isn't better, in my opinion. So I think this is good as it is.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Fields?
Yeah, I generally agree with Commissioner Walnick. The only thing I would flag, and this is probably a question for our legal staff, is there could be sort of future developments where there's either city-owned or privately-owned facilities that are open to the public, and would that count? And I don't know, is the answer. But I just, I don't want city-owned to be too narrow if, you know, a developer says this is, this is space for the public, does that, is that a park that we have jurisdiction over? I just, that's my only thing to flag, and I'm sure that's a question that can be answered. But that just, it scratches on the, the question of do definitions then end up narrowing in ways that they aren't meant to, is my only issue. So like, if there's privately-owned space that's for public use that we have, which is a future question. Anyway, I think as it is, it's fine. It just needs, it needs a little bit more. I don't know, fine tooth combing. I got my booster earlier today. I just want to tell all of you, so I'm feeling a little bit not as articulate perhaps as my, as my previous meetings, but I just, I wanted to flag that, that was something that when I did a read-through of this. I, I just, I had imagined could be an issue in the future.
Okay. Commissioner Home?
I agree with Christian Wallace comment.
Okay. Commissioner Field? No, wait a minute, I'm sorry. No, Commissioner Held, I'm sorry.
No more comments from me.
Okay, um. I'll, I'll then get more into this when we talk about the the policy piece. But I, I respect Commissioner Walnick's view about limiting the, the number of defined terms in, in the, in this document, especially since it's meant to be a policy aimed at, at sort of laying out goals and, and principles to be followed in, in determining what what facilities to, to name and how they should be named, as opposed to something like a contract, where indeed you can have pages and pages of defined terms, but I'm, I'm seeing going through the, the policy piece of this, that in a variety of ways, we are trying to put our arms around the distinction between a sort of ordinary level of significance of, of contribution of service, of financial donation that might makes a, a particular individual worthy of having a facility named after them, and the truly significant, truly extraordinary, truly important level of all these things that makes, that make, would make the city want to name a facility after that individual. And I'm not sure that we really have hit the mark in this draft. We, we've tried different words. We've got substantial, we've got significant, we've got exceptional, we've got extraordinary. And it just seems as though we're, we're, we're not hitting the target. And I think that, I'm not sure what word we should, or words we should use, but I think that concept has got to be in here as a definition. I think we, we need to understand what is meant by the level of contribution, whether it be in terms of service, or money, or land, that is going to put someone on the shortlist to have a facility named after them. And I, and I think, I, I'm, I'm not sure how to write that, but I, I think that needs to be in there in some way, shape, or form as a definition. Otherwise, I think the definitions we've got are fine. I, I don't have a problem with either one or either the definition of parks or public facilities and amenities, but I think this other concept needs to be in there somewhere. Anything additional on this before we move on?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I see where you're going with that. But I, I thought kind of the purpose of this policy was sort of to help. When, I mean, to put it negatively, I think it's really to protect the city when they don't want to name something after someone. And so I, I guess I'm a little worried about getting too specific of a definition of what a substantial contribution is. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to go through the exercise and see if, if someone can come up with something we can work with, but to me, if this is going to go through the department, us and the city council, and that seems like a lot of people to discuss whether something is substantial or not. So I guess I'm a little hesitant. Again, I'm willing to go through the exercise if, if we have something to maybe try to define that, but I think it's so vague in itself that it seems pretty hard to put in a policy. So that's my feeling on that.
Okay, no, I, I, I understand what you're, what you're saying in that, and I agree, it's going to, it's going to be hard, but well, and when we get into that, that with the next section there, maybe we can, we can talk further about this. Anything else as far as the definitions are concerned? Okay, here, hearing nothing, let's, let's move on to, to section three, and Commissioner Walnick, let's start, let's start with you.
Okay, so we're gonna, do we want to do section three, A, B, C altogether?
Perhaps not. Maybe we, well, there's only A and B, I think.
Oh, A and B, yeah.
Yeah, let's do them separately, that's fine.
It, it doesn't matter. I don't have that many comments, but, okay, so in A2, where we talk about naming parks after the individuals or organizations, I would vote to remove or funding. So when it says such a significant donation of land or funding, I think that option is always there if someone donates a large amount of money. But in my mind, we, we want to be encouraging the land donation. So I, I would pose that as a, a topic for discussion on whether we want to highlight funding there as well, or just sort of leave it up to the city council if they, you know, if there is a significant donation that comes in, does it need to be called out in this policy when they have the discretion anyway?
Okay. Commissioner Held?
Yeah, same, just on point two for this. I, you know, I wonder if, if it's going to be hard to double down a bit in terms of like a definition, is there maybe a second step? And I know this conversation about the policy, but is there a second step where we kind of come up with a template for applications that maybe ask some questions that would give more kind of visibility into why the recommendation is being made and how that would support the person being worthy of this? But I feel like there are lots of great checks and balances, but maybe there's some sort of standardized way we can collect some of that information if we don't do a definition. But I do feel like there's a chance to do a bit more, but I agree with Commissioner Walnick, that's a little bit, you know, squishy, and I think it's going to be tough to come up with a definition. And I'm glad to see that we are discouraging renaming of parks where there is common community usage, and I wonder if we should even be stronger in the language on, on that. And I think that was, that was it for me.
Okay, Commissioner Fields?
Yeah, I, I think that I agree with my previous two commissioners. I think this generally encapsulates what we discussed in the last meeting. I know it's not specific, but I think, you know, the reality is, you know, these things will be evaluated as they come up. I agree that removing funding makes sense. Obviously, it's, you know, in planning commission, there's things that can be negotiated around funding, if it's attached to a development. If there's an individual or an organization that wants to donate, that can be worked out, but I don't think it's necessarily something we want to, to advertise within the policy. I agree that, that it should be land, and I also agree we should be strongly discouraging renaming of parks. There would need to be a very compelling reason to rename. That's what I got.
Okay, Commissioner Home?
I also agree with the removal of the, or funding line. And then also under section B, the last statement under the first item was, because we're doing A and B, right?
Um. We could, I don't know how, did everybody else, was everybody else just focused on A, and they've got more comments on B?
I have more on B.
Yeah, I, I think we're just going to do A for right now.
Okay, then I'll, I'll wait on B.
Okay, yeah. Oh, okay, so nothing, nothing further on A? Okay, well, I, I'm in agreement with, with all of you. The, the only situation that I can imagine, and I don't know Director Kenzie, and whether we have ever had this happen, is the situation where someone comes along and says, I will provide the funds to purchase land to be dedicated as a public park. And if that was the case, that the person wanted the park to be named after them, I think that, that would be a pretty compelling case. Has that ever happened?
You know, not that I'm, I can't think of an instance where it has. I mean, there was a, I think the, the issue, I think, has really been around land, and frankly, we've had very few of those. I mean, I can only think of really one, which is Trina Park, where the land was donated. And so I, I cannot think of an instance where there has been a significant amount of money given, in fact, where we went out and purchased property.
Okay, I mean, it, it does happen. You, you read about this in other, certain, in other contexts and in other situations where that's happened, so I guess it's possible. But, you know, if, if the way that we've written it, this is, this is, these are really examples that are being put out. It's not, we're not saying it, that it only this or what have you. So I'm, I'm happy with taking out the war funding and focusing on land. I also wanted just to note that this is, I think, the first place that we have come across an individual being deceased or living, and we are limited, we appear to be limiting renaming of a park to recognition of a deceased individual. And I don't know how, if anybody has wrong feelings about that, but I just wanted to point out that that's there. Any thoughts? Anybody?
Yeah, I mean, oh, go ahead.
I thought that was in the section for facilities, not parks.
I'm just noting, if you look at two, A2 says, in recognition of a deceased individual who contributed extraordinary service to the city of San Mateo.
Oh, you're right. I, I missed that.
Well, I had to the first couple of times I went through this, and I just wanted to point out that it's there. That's all.
And I'm still stuck on this a little bit, and again, maybe you guys covered this, and I shouldn't reopen this after last time, but it just seems weird that we're focused very much on this person being deceased. I think, I can understand maybe further down saying that might be a preference and give some rationale as to why, but I feel like we're very much limiting this from the get-go by carrying the deceased piece throughout.
Well, I guess my question would be, should we change, should the language be changed to say something along the lines of in recognition of an individual who contributed extraordinary service instead of limiting it to a deceased individual?
Be my preference.
So I can speak to that. I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, Commissioner Held, at the previous meeting, and I, I still feel this way a month later. I do have a preference for naming things af, in memorial, as a tribute to someone who is deceased. Frankly, because you can know the full extent of what that person has or hasn't done. Obviously, the lens of history can change over time. But, you know, we, we have some examples even across our region of schools, for example, being named after living schools, for example, being named after living people, and then there being controversy and wanting to rename them while that person is still alive. Um, and that can be just a really sticky and controversial issue. And so I, I will say personally, I, I do think there, it makes sense to have at least a preference for naming things after someone who is deceased, it's clear what their legacy is. But, and I said this in the previous meeting, and I'll say it again. I'm, I'm happy to be outvoiced on this, certainly there are extraordinary individuals in San Mateo who probably are worthy of this, um, who, you know, are alive and we can honor them while they're living. But I, I will say, I do have a preference for, for naming things after, after deceased people. I hope that's helpful.
Absolutely. Um, any, any other thoughts on this before we move on to B?
I, I have a, so my, um, my priority here is that it's more about land and that we're, I think this is a written, and I think we all agree that it, we really don't want these parks to be renamed a lot. I mean, really, we want them to be geographic or significant natural, cultural, you know, the features. And so I don't have a problem with the deceased part here because it, I don't, I don't feel strongly about it in, in total, but this one seems like we really do want to be limiting what we're doing with the park itself. And so to me, I don't have as, I guess, I'm on the fence anyway, but I would fall towards being more restrictive on naming parks than I would on facilities, so. That's my thoughts on that.
And I, I would actually fall the other way, I, um, so I would echo Commissioner Massey's or Chair Massey's comments that maybe we just, um, don't actually say deceased, because you could in this area have an individual that wants to donate money to buy, to buy, you know, donate land or donate money to buy a park. And I don't think we want to say, sorry, you're still alive, we won't take it. So, um, so I, I, I don't have a problem with it, and I, and you know, the Commissioner Field's comments or concerns about you find out later in life that they're maybe not someone you want to honor in the same fashion, well, that's why we have a policy within here to allow you to change. And, you know, if it's the Harvey Weinstein Park, then you have no problem changing it when, when that comes forth and, um, you know, and, and, and yeah, you have those hard discussions when that happens, but, but that's just part of life. So, so actually, I, I agree and appreciate, um, Chair Massey pointing out that these thing, and I would actually say to just say, to not, not require be deceased, just, you know, that we, that we are supporting the, the donation of land if, if that were to, were to happen.
Thank you for that. Picking up on Commissioner Waldick's point, another thought is to take that entire provision out. And, I mean, and it's really a question of, under what circumstances do we want to name a park after an individual? But, um, we could say that the only way that we'll name a park after an individual is if they make a significant donation of land and basically donate the land for that park. And the debt, the donation could be direct or indirect in the sense that either the, the person owns the land and donates it or provides money to purchase the land. Looking at that as, as an indirect donation of land, and that maybe those, that's the only circumstance under which we will name a park after a person. And I think Director Kenzie, it, what you, you're saying to us is the only park that we've got, that where there was a donation of land, I think that park was named after the family, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I, I think to the, just to the point of, you know, of individual names, I mean, we, we already have two examples existing where we have parks that are named after individuals, Martin Luther King Park, and the Bayside Joinville Park, the Joinville part being Gordon Joinville, who was a officer slain here in San Mateo a good number of years ago. So, um, what I was trying to do was maybe over justifying the names that are already out there, rather than trying to be more thinking forward in terms of that. So, um, as I said, this really is for for the commission and ultimately for the council, um, to make a, a decision around these policy kinds of issues. You know, I think that what might be helpful in terms of giving direction to staff, and this is the same kind of process that the council uses, and that is in order for a suggestion to move forward, we really need consensus from at least three of you to be able to do that. If I chase, if we chase every single comment, we would never, um, get to a policy. So whatever you all bring up, it would be helpful to try to get to consensus on whether or not you agree with that change or not. Because if, if we're not seeing at least three people kind of in support of that, then it doesn't really help give the direction to staff that we need.
Okay, well, liner, well, before I propose anything, Commissioner Hall?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm reading it over again, and I'm remembering when I was reading this earlier in the week, pre- pre- pre-meeting. And actually, I, I don't have, I, I'm changing my comment, I don't have a problem with the way it's written. Um, and the reason being is that it's actually, it's an either or. It's a, it's a, so it says naming parks of individuals, organizations may be considered under special circumstances, such as a significant donation of lands to the city of, and Department of Parks and Recreation. So that's one, one use case. And so that could be, that doesn't exclude a living person. And then it says, or, uh, in recognition of a deceased individual who contributed extraordinary service. So in that case, I, I think that's, I'm perfectly in support of, of, in support of the clauses as written. As long as, as long as we take out the war funding part that we all sort of seemed to agree on earlier.
Okay, um, so we have, we have in, in, in front of us the, the, uh, possibility of you're, you are proposing leaving, uh, A two drafted the way it is, or do, or are you suggesting any other changes?
The, the way it is minus the war funding part.
Yeah, okay. How do, how does everybody else feel about that? Anybody?
Makes sense to me, I agree with Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Fields?
Yeah, that's a fine correction or change to me.
All right, so, so you've got, we've got three people saying leave it as is, except for the, the deletion of war funding. Uh, Commissioner Wallick, what are your thoughts on that?
Oh, I, that's fine with me, I agree with that.
Okay, I, I'll go along with that too. So, um, Director Kenzie, you, you have your consensus on that one.
Forgot to help.
Thank you.
I did, did I forget you?
No, it's okay, that's, that's fine, I think these are examples, so I, I agree with, this, this is fine.
I've got to be better at checking off names here. Okay, well, let's move on to B then.
I'm sorry, just before, I heard a couple of comments, and I think it's just mainly whether we, you know, play some additional words. In A three, um, I think I heard more, um, a, a desire to have stronger language about like strongly discouraged or something along that line, that I think I, I heard that and we don't want to get in the habit of renaming existing names that the community is already familiar with.
That's right. Okay, we, we'd act strongly before discouraged.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can do the word smithing, I just want to make sure that if that's kind of, um, the, the consensus that you all have, to really make it very, um, no- noteworthy that changing an existing name of a park is not something that we want to undertake.
It should be rare.
Rare.
Yeah, that makes sense, I, I'm rereading this number three and actually was kind of confused because it seemed like you were, there was something else with common community usage. I think, um, whoever suggested rare, I missed it. Just renaming of parks should be rare, you know, just be simple, s- simplify that.
Okay, thank you, I got direction on that.
Okay, we, we've given you what you need on that point. Okay, um, well, that, now let's move on, now let's move on to B. So, who hasn't gone first here? Commissioner Hall? What's your thought, thoughts on B?
My only comment is that the last, very last sentence in item one, um, substantial noteworthy public service as an elected official, I would just take off the elected official part.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm curious then, uh, Director Kenzie, and what what was the, what was the, the thought behind, um, focusing on elected officials?
To be honest with you, there wasn't any, it's what I read in another policy, and I thought I would just throw it in there and see how you all reacted to it. I was, I, that was, happened to be in another city policy, and I said, well, let me put it in and see how you all react.
Okay, okay. All right, how, how does everybody feel about that one?
I agree with Commissioner Hall, I think it should be any individual, not just an elected official.
Yeah, I was struck by it as well, I would say maybe community member or something like that instead of elected official would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and I think, I don't, I'm not even sure you need that, if you just take out an elected official, because you'll, you'll get community member, you'll get, you know, Parks and Rec director, you'll get, you know, any other kind of administrator, city employee who's dedicated a lot of time.
Not, not to mention our MLK Park would, would not qualify as, as an elected official, but it would under as noteworthy public service.
We, we could, we could propose just, uh, taking out that language and, and just ending it and substantial and noteworthy public service, period. Does that sit well with everybody? At least does it?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that good, good comment, okay. Got you, okay. Commissioner Fields, what thoughts on anything else in B?
I don't have any further comments, I think that's a good change that we just agreed to. Like I said, I still think we should, I have a preference for deceased, um, but I'm fine with the way number three is worded.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Held?
Nothing further from me.
Okay, Commissioner Waldick?
No, no comments for me.
Okay. Well, this is where I, I see us reaching for some way of drawing that distinction between, um, noteworthy, unusual, extraordinary, uh, sort of outstanding, um, and not. And I think, and I note in here that for, that we have the phrase substantial or outstanding contributions in quotation marks, and I'm not sure why that is there. Unless we're going to make that a defined term, and even if we did, I, I don't know why we would put in quotation marks. Uh, was there a reason for that?
Um, I think that might have been another one that I picked up from another city. That I thought I would, I'm, I, I'm happy, I mean, I, I think it's up to you all, I think, um, I would, I would caution you all about trying to get too descriptive about what can constitute substantial or outstanding contribution. I, I think that, um, and that's why I think it goes through, and I think one of the commissioners said this earlier, it goes through a relatively, um, you know, um, rigorous process, by the time it comes to the department, they get whatever facts they need to get, it comes to the commission, and then it goes on to the council. And so there are some checks and balances along the way, and, and I just, obviously, it's up to you all, um, to, to give us the direction, but I, I get a little concerned if we're trying to really put more, um, definition around that. Because otherwise, you know, what do we say after, you know, 20 years of service, is that too little, is, you know, is 15 not enough? And so that's the kind of thing that I think it's, it's difficult to try and quantify. So, um, but in terms of putting quotation marks around that, again, I think that was, that was something that I picked up from one of the other cities that I was, that I was looking at.
Okay, okay, how does everybody feel about, about that directionally? That, let, let's not try to define this any more specifically than has been done here. We got a consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, I'm, I'm with you all, I'm, I'm changing my view on this to agree with all of you. I do have two, uh, well, before I get to me, anything else from anybody about B? No, okay, um, just two things, and, and one of them is, I think the quotation marks should be taken out. But the other is, in the first sentence, we say, public facilities and amenities within parks may be named after selected individuals or organizations in their honor as desired and appropriate. I'm not sure what that last phrase does for us, and, and I'm thinking that it should be removed. Any thoughts on that?
I, I agree, I think the next few sentences basically say desired and appropriate. I mean, they don't literally say it, but that, they describe what that means.
That was, that was kind of my feeling, and I, I think that came out of the last po- the, um, original San Mateo policy, if I remember correctly.
I also think those are kind of dangerous words that might people might have a fight with, um, if, uh, something is, you know, said, or if it's denied, I guess, naming is desire, denied. Appropriate and desired seem to be words that could be really used against the city on that one.
I agree with you, I, I, I think it should come out. Do we have? What, what, what is?
I'm fine with that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I actually, I would even just add, like, I feel like all of number one could be pared down and just be simplified a little bit, like, it feels a little repetitive, and also in the same way that the rule or the definitions, um, seem to be narrowing, this also, I don't know if it's narrowing, but it's, I'm not sure it's clarifying. So maybe simpler language with the knowledge that there is a process here. You know, did this person or did this individual do something, you know, significant, substantial or outstanding contribution, I think it's fine, but we're really looking for something significant and special or extraordinary. Now, I'm just giving you new words, but, but it, it should be a little bit clearer, and it doesn't, I think it, it could be less wordy.
I guess my thought on that would be that we could leave that kind of massaging of the language to staff? Is that okay with everybody, or do we want to get into it?
I don't want to get into it, but I, I do think this is the section where we do want to kind of have a little bit of a list, some guidance, um, on what, you know, what will, could qualify somebody and what couldn't, I mean, I think if we take out all of the examples, then we're really opening ourselves up to a lot of people making requests that maybe aren't appropriate, to use that word. Um, so I agree with you, it can be cleaned up, but I, I would caution against removing all of the examples.
Okay, I, I, I'm, I'm with you on that, everybody else? What's? That, that makes sense? Yes? Okay. Okay, um, just before we leave- Okay, just before we leave this, is there any further discussion on B3? And that has to do with the preference for an individual to be deceased. Do we want to talk about that anymore? Are we going to leave that as is? Anybody?
I said my piece on it, but I can move on, not a not a hill I'm going to die on, pun intended, sorry.
Okay. All right. So so we're okay. We'll leave that one alone? Yes, we've got at least three of us on board for that? Okay, all right, so we're leaving. We're leaving. We've got three of us because I'm I'm on board for that as well. Let's leave that one alone. Okay, section four. The process for naming parks and facilities. Commissioner Fields, why don't we start with you? Thoughts on on section four? You okay? You want me to start with someone else?
No, no, it's fine. I just I was having a mouse problem. You know, this kind of mouse, not, you know, small room. Thankfully, no, I think this is the right process laid out. There's probably some language wordsmithing that can make it a little bit clearer, but I think this is this is right, and knowing that there's a significant process in place, I think helps to know that it's not just, you know, I really liked, you know, my neighbor or my uncle or whoever, that there really needs to be, you know, something worthwhile that that a person or a group or an organization has done that that makes it worth, you know, worth the time of all of this. And so I think that that's clear in this process. So I don't have any any major changes here.
Okay. Commissioner Commissioner Hall. Thoughts on this one?
No comments.
Okay, Commissioner Walden?
Yes, so the second paragraph of section A. There's a sentence there. Let's see, where is it? The city council will review and propose the naming recognition, okay, whether to approve or deny the name change. I think it should just say the naming. If we're talking about something new, there wouldn't be a change there. And then the last sentence of the section and C, in the case where it's basically saying that the city will make every effort to preserve the plaque somewhere on the site, and I I flagged it. I I don't know if that needs to be called out. I guess I'm wondering if we were, you know, trying to inch or make some sort of blanking on the words right now, but you know, just some assurances that, you know, if they buy a building or pay, you know, make a significant contribution and that that it will last a long time that will have a plaque there. I I guess I I'm I just I want to make sure that there's flexibility when we decommission or demolish a facility that we aren't required to bend over backwards to leave the name or leave a plaque or find a spot for it. So I wanted to just throw that out there for discussion.
Any other anybody else's thoughts on on that point? No? Anybody, any? Anybody, anybody? No, we're not?
I guess maybe I should phrase it a little more specifically. I'm not sure I'm for this, but just sort of removing that last sentence, I guess, is what I'm discussing, whether we need to say that we're going to try to preserve the plaque somewhere. Does that does that get us anything as a city?
Can I ask you a question? Or is it that you're worried we're over committing as a city?
Kind of. I mean, I know that the language is very much like, you know, we'll make every effort, but it does seem like a promise.
You kind of covered that in the first sentence of the paragraph anyway, right? So I don't. Yeah. I I agree. I think I would strike that that sentence.
I agree as well.
Mr. Hall, your thoughts on this?
I don't have an opinion one way or the other.
Okay, okay. I don't I don't have a problem with striking, and I'm sort of thinking that we could do something along the lines of leave the first sentence the way it is and take out sort of the middle of the second sentence and just say if necessary, the plaque may be relocated. And leave the last sentence out. Thought anybody have thoughts on that? Is that too much? Is that too much? Cutting this down? I mean, I think the idea is that and we're sort of dodging the issue here, and maybe Director Kenzie, and this was your one of your points about where you know there are things missing, and you want it, you're waiting for us to identify them. But which is kind of dodging the whole issue of what happens if there's a facility named for an individual that is demolished, what happens to the name? You know, somebody, somebody did something to justify the facility being named for them, and then it it's knocked down, and you know, we decide the city decides to make a soccer field out of the site instead of having a facility there. And what happens? So I don't know. I don't know that whether just to flag that as a potential issue, or does anybody have thoughts on that?
I think we're beating it too much. We can leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's one where we don't want to get too specific, and I mean, I would leave it to Sheila to figure out the right words there, but I, yeah, I don't think we need to to wordsmith that one too much. I think that could just break us into jail.
Okay, but let's come back to because Commissioner Walden made a specific proposal here, and that is to strike the last sentence. What? How does everybody feel about that? Do we have three people for that? Okay. You have that one, then? Okay, great.
But it but this raises an interesting question, and this was really more for where this not this section. Let me go back to the previous section. I'm not sure this particular section B4 is appropriately placed, because in this section, we're talking about really the what happens when a facility is demolished or decommissioned. In the in the section that you were just reviewing, we were only talking about the plaque, not the not what happens to the facility name. And so I struggled whether both of those should be put together. Or or does this make more sense in terms of what actually happens to the facility name? If a facility is is not is decommissioned or demolished versus what happens to the plaque? So I I'm just looking to make sure we kind of didn't. I I heard consensus on all of them, but but then in your recent discussion, I also heard about, you know, what truly is more important is what happens when a facility is actually demolished or decommissioned. So I was trying to separate those two, and if there's any sense that those two things should be together in one place, that may help with the organization of it.
I guess in my mind, how it is makes sense. I mean, what to do with the plaque seems like a process issue to me, not a policy issue, which is where you have in B4. So maybe, I mean, I still am. I still think that we should strike the last sentence in, was that 4C? But I I don't. I I think it's fine to leave it separate, in my opinion.
Well, that's that's fine with me as well. Do we have any other thoughts? Okay, we've got some consensus on that. Anybody want to argue against it before we move off it? But back to and then we'll we'll leave this old day. Leave this, but that the proposal to take out the last sentence of 4C. Do we have three people who who are for that?
Yes.
All right, well, I know I'll vote for that, too. So that's that's you got three for that also. Okay, section five. Someone want to volunteer to go first on this?
Sure, I have no comments.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Commissioner Walden?
Sure. Okay, so most of my comments are in 5B. The last sentence seems not necessary, the right to approve or deny. I think we've clearly stated that. I would wonder if we want to add just a sentence, something like won't be named after products or policies policies contrary to the department's stated mission. I'm thinking you have you call out, you know, alcohol and cannabis, but there may be other things that really are not you know, for parks and recreation that we just want to make, you know, might want to have something there on that.
Does that mean we can't name it after a sofa company?
Exactly.
I would also, I would say I agree with Commissioner Walnix's comment on section B. I would also say names must be tasteful and non-controversial. I feel like means nothing. Or rather, it could mean a lot of things, like, I'm not sure. I don't know. I I like it just struck me as kind of an I the tasteful, I think, is what struck me because what I it just feels very subjective. I think non-controversial is fine. So maybe its names must be non-controversial, and and then the language Commissioner Walnick suggested, you know, you know, reflect or align with the values and and goals of of the department, something like that. But other than that, I think this is this is the right direction.
I'd actually question the non-controversial statement, too. I mean, I think, you know, that's kind of hard, but to be more specific, my other comment was, I think it should be something like not contrary to the mission of the department, rather than something like values or but I don't know if we if you have a stated mission, if you could reference, you know, a stated mission or something like that. But I I agree with Commissioner Fields on that point of tasteful and non-controversial. Do seem like sparking words in our current climate, at least.
Other thoughts on that?
I would agree. That feels more kind of like the stick. I think it's more we want the carrot in terms of what we are looking for in terms of direction on names. And I would agree to, I know we list a bunch of those areas where we don't want to, we wouldn't consider a name. I think there's, I can think of 10 other organizations we would not want either, so I'd figure out that one kind of catch all. So that we don't just limit ourselves to the groups listed there, or we use those, or, for example, when we list the list that current names that are on there.
Yeah, it seems it it seems to me that I mean, I I agree with with what's said in here, and I think I actually think saying that the city council should have the right to approve or deny any proposed facility name serves a useful purpose in the sense that you know, we can say the policy is that certain names won't be considered, and maybe we want to make some suggestion as to the kinds of names that we would want to to see, but reiterating there, this is up to the council and that no one should expect to be able to point to the policy and somehow say, well, you know, you've you've got to pick this name, or you you or you can't pick some other name be that the that the council somehow doesn't have the right is is constrained by the policy, and what we're saying is the council is not constrained by the policy. They can approve or deny any name that they want, and which which is reflective of section 1C, where we say the council has final authority to to approve all this. We're just sort of putting it down here as well as a marker that this is that the council is going to decide this. I don't know whether there are some other things that should go into a collection of names that will not be considered. But I I I guess I'm not. I'm not sure how how we try to address that. I don't know, Director Kenzie, are we helping you at all with this or not?
This is one that I think when I was doing the research in other cities. This is one area, particularly this thing around fundraising and naming rights. Some cities have it as part of their facility naming policy. Other cities have it as a completely separate policy around fundraising and names related to fundraising. So I can go back and maybe do a little bit more due diligence. I only looked at those that were connected with the naming policy. I didn't do a lot of research on policies that were related to fundraising activities and and naming related to that. So I can go back and maybe try to do a little bit more more research around this. It's just not not really cities were not consistent at all about where they were placing this portion of a policy.
It strikes me that this might be a conversation that you should have with the city attorney. Because the the whole idea of a fundraising campaign just to me, it just contains an abundance of issues, of which this is only one. And I think the point is about maybe this doesn't belong here. It's maybe well taken that this this belongs in a policy about fundraising campaigns and how the city is going to manage fundraising campaigns of this sort. Because I think, for example, we're saying an agreement between the city and major donors shall be negotiated, which outlines the terms of the donation. Yes, indeed, and that's far beyond our scope. So that would be my suggestion is with respect to this entire section is that it may be that we should be handing that issue over to the city attorney's office to think about, or I don't know to whether or to what extent the city has a policy about this kind of thing.
We don't.
But maybe we should, and I don't know that Parks and Rec is the department to lead that. Director Kenzie, you know what your thoughts are on that? Is this something you see as part of our our scope or or not?
Well, I think, again, this was a bit of a tough one, because I heard some discussion at your last meeting around, you know, how do we, what kind of names do we want to consider if it's really around fundraising? And so I may have taken that as some interest on the part of the commission to then actually include that as part of the policy. When maybe, in fact, it should just not be here at all. And again, in looking at other cities, some have it in as part of an overall naming. some have it in as part of an overall naming policy. Some do not. They have a whole separate issue around fundraising and, you know, who solicits money on behalf of the city. And if there's a foundation, you know, that they're, that they take the lead. And so that really gets into a whole other area that is not anticipated as part of this.
What are my fellow commissioners' thoughts on this? Should this whole section five be in here or not?
I, I definitely agree that it needs a pass by the city attorney, which it'll get anyway. But I, I think, I think Parks, the Parks Department is, is kind of on the front of this. I mean, there's, I'm thinking of the other departments that really, you know, maybe get significant donations for things. Library, maybe arts, but I, I think there's not that many of them. So it doesn't strike me as so odd to, that the Parks policy would kind of include it, I guess. But, but I think you have some good points on, on that there's a whole lot of issues that are, that this, this idea raises.
Other thoughts on this?
I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it in or out?
In.
Okay, we got to vote for, we got a vote, a vote for in, I guess two votes for in, really? Am, am I correct? Okay, we've got two votes. We got two votes for in. Do we have a third?
Yeah, I think in with a review from the city attorney is, is the right direction.
As I understand it, that's going to happen.
Yes.
So, and they may grab this and say, you know, no, that's ours. Then we've got, we've got three. I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the fence about it. So, but we've got three, and I think that's directional. Commissioner Held, are you okay with our coming out that way?
Yes, that's great.
Okay.
I have another thought on this section though. So we were talking earlier about that section B, which is sort of what we won't name things after. And I'm wondering if this is the right place for that, because it does seem that it's, that's broader than just a financial campaign. But maybe the concern is there with the financial campaign that somebody might come in and just try to buy the name. But that, as we've been talking, that I wonder if that section actually might belong somewhere else. That's, you know, just, that applies to any naming we do, not just fundraising campaigns.
Do we need to say that? I mean, do we need that section at all? In that the council, we, we've said in the beginning that the process, that the city council has the final authority and that it, it, it has to pass through the department staff and, and our commission. Do we need to, to say in there that these names will, will not be considered? Especially since I imagine the council would have the power if they wanted to, to name the facility after anything that they chose. You know, if, if I don't know, a cannabis company offered an, an enormous amount of money to build a new recreation center. The council could conceivably say, well, yes, there's a policy, but in view of the size of the contribution, we're prepared to accept it and choose the name and that's, that's within their purview as, as our, as our elected council. I don't know. That, that, that's what's occurring to me as we talk about this, that maybe that section just doesn't belong in here. Thoughts? Anybody?
I have thoughts, but they're all contradictory. So I'm not sure they would be very helpful. But I do, I, I mean, we had, it seemed like we had a lot of issue with the second sentence of that. So taking out the whole section would, you know, avoid the tasteful and non-controversial issue. I think you're right, the city council has the discretion in the end. So but I also think it's a policy on naming. So we're not just saying what we will and want to do, we're also providing guidance, right? So, you know, someone might, you know, there might be wiggle room in what they name it, right? So maybe that will provide a little bit of direction. So like I said, all my thoughts are contradictory.
Yeah. I don't know. It just seems to me, we've said, naming rights that promotes those one, two, three, four, five things will not be considered, which suggests that anything else goes. And I don't know if we want to suggest that and saying that it will not be considered, but the city council has the right to approve or deny any name kind of contradicts itself. So anyway, that, that might, that would be my thought is to take out the whole thing, but if nobody else likes that idea, then I would be comfortable with leaving it in, but taking out tasteful and non-controversial.
What if there was a sentence that included something like what Commissioner Walnick had suggested around, you know, alignment with the mission of Parks and Rec? And then say, you know, something like, you know, examples. This is, anyway, this is wordsmithing, but like, I, I, I understand, like, not wanting to limit it to that list, but could that list be?
Examples.
Examples or, you know, possible, possibilities outside the scope of what we're looking at or something. I mean, is there a way to make that a list that's not exclusive, but an example? It's just, it like without, I don't think we need to like come up with a sentence. I just, that's the direction I would want to give to Sheila as this gets reworded and, and revised. Because I, I do think, I do think this list is helpful.
But it shouldn't be exclusive.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would be with you on that. How does everybody else feel? As a direction.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. The way it's written here, it says will not be considered. That's probably the strongest language we've seen anywhere in this, this document. And so the, I, I guess I'm, the only hesitation is, I mean, that came from somewhere, right? That these, these are the specific things that we just, we won't consider it, you know? So I, I don't know, are those the things, is that the right list? I guess is the question that I have.
So again, this was, this, a couple of, of other cities had either this exact language or similar language. And so I, I can certainly go back and do some more, again, do a little bit more wordsmithing around this. I think the idea of having these as examples, rather than here's the absolute things that we won't do, but also not trying to get into a list of saying, you know, I mean, there's, I, I think because at that point, it does start to get a little bit more subjective, you know, if around lots of different things. And so I, I think to try and maybe not use too many more examples, but maybe try to do it as, again, not exclusive, but examples and see if there's a way of trying to tie it into, you know, consistent with the mission or, you know, healthy lifestyle. I don't know. I, I can do some, I could do some wordsmithing and bring some examples back to you the next time.
Well, that, that would work for me.
I personally think this falls under the category of, this is going to be reviewed by multiple people when it comes up, and we don't need to do anything else with the language.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be happy with going in the direction that, that Sheila has, has laid out. Does that work? Yes, yes, okay. All right. So now we're up to the last section here about non, non-facility naming opportunities. Any comments on that one? Okay.
Yeah, I, I just wondered if we wanted to reiterate the language about who pays for the plaque in this section and just kind of copy and paste. Responsibility for the purchase shall be borne by the requesting party unless otherwise negotiated with the city, something like that.
Oh, I see. Instead of saying when wreck, when initiated by the city, the city shall pay.
Right.
Okay, how does everybody else feel about that? All right, I'm, I'm for it also. Okay, any other comments on this? Commissioner Held, no? No, no. Eric, anything from you? On this?
No.
Okay, me either. So I, I think we're done. And the, the question that, that the chair is always supposed to ask in situations like this to the, to the director, and that is, have we given you the help that you were looking for when you asked us to take a look at this?
Yes.
Okay.
An unqualified yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Then I would say we're done with that agenda item. We'll move on to announcements and, and communications.
So a couple of things, I think all of you should have gotten the invitation or the announcement about this coming Saturday. Winter Wonderland will be in Central Park from four to eight. So we have lots of exciting things that are scheduled. We think, well, we don't think, we know the weather is going to be nice. And so we're actually anticipating, you know, large crowds of people. People are really flocking to outdoor events right now, rather than indoor events. And so the one thing that we have included, and I don't know whether or not it was in the invitation, but the one, the one event that we are missing this year is our annual Holiday Festival of Dance. That was one that we chose not to do. And simply because of it being completely indoors. And so in lieu of not having the Holiday Festival of Dance, we're actually taking a number of the children's dance classes that have been meeting during the fall, and they will be doing performances on the backside of the central stage. So it's, it's not obviously your full-on Holiday Festival of Dance, but it does give some of the classes an opportunity to perform after this fall session. So those will be held at different times across the evening as well.
Okay, good.
Other than that, December is generally a busy month for staff, particularly staff in Martin Luther King Center, where they're co-hosting a lot of events with the Police Activities League. And so there are lots of events going on out at King Center, particularly those that are co-hosted with our, our Police Activities League programs. Other than that, I think you've hopefully all seen the ice rink is back in operation. He loves Pete Mott, who is the operator, loves good weather. With the exception that in the middle of the day, these last couple of weeks, the weather has been so warm that it tends to melt the ice. And so if you go at 2:30 or 3:00 in the afternoon, you're going to get about a half inch of water on the ice surface. But it's just, it's absolutely great to see so many people back out. And I think he had gotten at least four or five sponsors to sponsor free skate days. And so today was one of those days that there's actually a sponsor that pays whatever the sponsorship rate is, and then every kid who comes on this day gets to, or everybody, not just children, but everybody gets to skate for free. And so he has, I believe, four, maybe five of those throughout the entire season. So that's, it's great to see that back in operation.
Wonderful, wonderful. Does anybody else have anything? Okay.
If I could, I'm sorry, Chris, if I can just make, if I can just make one further comment. On the crystal ball this time, I tried to indicate not necessarily by month, but the major items that I'm hoping to try and get accomplished through the end of May. I don't know when they're going to be scheduled. Some of those are within my control, some of them are not. And so something like the discussion that we had earlier this year about the whole in lieu fees, that's being handled right now by somebody from our community development department in trying to work with a consultant on that. So I know it's one that it would be helpful to try and get that tied up, but some of those are not within my control. And so I think from here on out, I'm going to continue to cross those off the list when we bring them to you, rather than trying to schedule certain things by months. Because I'm just not sure that I'm going to be able to predict that well between now and the end of May.
Okay. Okay. Any, anybody else have anything? Okay, well then.
When's, was the, was the email you sent out to Sheila, is that like a official public announcement?
Yes.
Well, okay, because I, I was late to the start of it, and so I didn't officially say congratulations and, and you're going to be missed.
Thank you. As I said earlier, I'm not ready to take my parade lap yet. So we still have a lot, we still have a lot of work to do.
Well, I, I'm sure we, we all join you in, in hoping that we can get as much of, and hopefully all of, all of the above completed in the, the, the five months that we've got, still got before. So we will, we'll do everything we can to make, to try to help you make all this happen.
Well, and, and myself and staff will continue to work on our end as well. So anyway. Hope to see most of you out at Central Park, maybe on Saturday for Winter Wonderland. And if I don't see you, you know, best wishes for a great holiday season during the month of December.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And we'll look forward to then to, I, I assume we should figure that we're going to be meeting every month then between now and, and May. Sounds like.
That's probably a relatively good assumption.
Yeah, okay. Well, then best wishes to everybody for, for next year and have a wonderful holiday season. And we'll, we'll, we'll see you all after, after New Year's.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, we're, we're officially adjourned.